Alright, I got six o'clock, y'all ready?
Yup.
Um, someone call the meeting order.
Councilman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Green?
Here.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Lethbridge?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Hi, Chris.
Here.
C. Train Griffin?
Here.
Um, do you have any prayer concerns?
I think we need to remember Steve.
Okay.
He's, uh, had, uh, his surgery been scheduled for a few weeks and for whatever reason it happened. So, I'll leave us in prayer.
Alright.
Our most kind gracious and loving heavenly Father, Lord, we're just thankful for this day and we're thankful for this opportunity that we can gather and just do the business of the, of the city of Carthage. Lord, I just pray that the decisions that we make here will be pleasing to you, Lord. But we do remember, want to remember all these, uh, prayer, all the prayer concerns that we have, those that are sick, Lord, those that are afflicted, uh, those that have lost loved ones. Lord, I just pray that you will comfort their families. But we do want to remember especially Steve as he prepares to have this surgery, Lord, I just pray that you will be with him and, and, Lord, I just pray that it's a success and, and that he can get better from, from this procedure, Lord. Lord, most of all today, we're just thankful for your son, for it's in his name I pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so y'all got the say the minutes, um...
A motion.
Y'all make the motion. Go ahead. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so we, uh, are gonna push Sally to the front. She's got something that she wants to bring, uh, to today and she has a pool party that she needs to get back to. So, Miss Sally, you get up here and say your business.
It's really short and sweet, but I like to ask a favor. I'm always trying to dream up stuff that brings business to the city park. And I've thought about it for two or three years and just hadn't been game enough to bring forward, but pulled my big old pants up and I'm ready to bring it. I would like to give every student in Smith County school system a one-day pass to the city pool. I think there's ten schools and I think we designate a day for Carthage, Alabamity, Defeated, Forks River, Union Heights. And the good part about it is, it's not gonna cost you a dime. Doesn't take any more chemicals to do two hundred in the pool or one in the pool. I bring four to six lifeguards per day in to start with and I can cover it. I would just like for y'all to approve that.
I make a motion to...
Y'all make a motion. Any discussion?
Sounds like a great idea.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Thank you, I'm going to work.
All in favor?
I made a motion there.
Uh, we're gonna move to the non-emergency invoices of over ten thousand.
Have these here, so I'll give them to you. Get that, a few, take one, pass it down. The first one is, uh, Stenzel Electric. That's for Third Avenue East and, uh, that project is approved, budgeted, and it's completed. I don't know if the chief wants to say anything about it, but it's done, we just need to, need to pay them.
If y'all have any questions, I can answer them best I can.
As far as I know, as far as I know, it's, it's done. If we ever need to make any small adjustments or something, I can always reach out to them and try to, but...
But how's the flow? Do you see it better?
As far as I know, it seems better. Uh, we've not had any, any complaints, knock on wood, we've not had any wrecks either because of it, so. As far as I know, it's good and then obviously all the equipment is brand-new now too as well, so hopefully that'll last the town for a long time as well, so.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you want to approve them individually or collectively, but in any case, uh, here's, uh, the next one. And this for a Forte Line who won the bid for, uh, water lines and we have the water lines and we had, uh, some stuff that was on backwater, finally gotten that, so now we're ready to pay them. So it has been budgeted, approved via bid and we need to pay them. I don't know if you can have anything to add to that.
I don't, unless y'all have any questions.
Okay. The next, uh, item that I'll pass down is the, uh, the standard ones, which includes the Stenzel and the, uh, Forte Line, uh, but those, just the health insurance, retirement system, um, and those are the only ones that we have in excess of the ten thousand dollars. Any questions about those items? It's ready for...
So does, does somebody want to make a motion that we approve all three of these or what do you want, just put them up?
We just...
Make a motion that we approve the three.
I'll second.
Sam seconds. We need a real call now.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Lethbridge?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Alright, so, uh, citizens' concerns, just hop up here and let us have it.
Hi, should I just start?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I live on Hole Avenue and, um, so the paving project had, to my knowledge, started a year ago and I don't watch these meetings in, in the entirety, so I don't know if there's been any updates. All I do know is that it's a mess, um, and my kids can't ride bikes on the street and we're big bike riders on, um, during the summer. So, in addition to that, there are, um, some gravel buildup that's on, I've got pictures if y'all want to see them, um, there are, is gravel buildup from the duplex that's at the corner of Dogwood and Hole, since that driveway is on a hill that it washes down into my driveway and causes, um, just a messy buildup. Y'all can look at the pictures if you want. And then two other concerns is that on Hole right across from my driveway, I live at 315, there is what is forming like a, it looks like a sinkhole. I don't know the correct terminology for it, but it does look concerning. Um, so I don't know if that will be fixed with the paving or what and, um, and then in the back, I have a creek that runs through my yard that, um, connects with my neighbor's yard that lives on Jackson. I don't know the house number that he lives on, but the, um, creek, we've always been responsible for mowing it, clearly it's on our property, but whose responsibility does it fall whenever it is on our property as far as like the upkeep, the culverts, the overgrowth of soil, whatever you want to call it, um, because it has expanded since we've lived there. Um, it used to flow a lot stronger than what it is now, so it seems to be like it's just overgrown and it's not flowing as properly as it should. And there's some sinkholes with that, that we've taken the gravel from the beginning of our driveway to fill up and it just goes nowhere and it washes away. So, um, just some things to bring to y'all's attention. And so I would like to know, I guess to recap, um, when will the paving start and end? I would like a schedule of that or to be posted or something so that we can know where to park. We are pretty frequently leaving our house during the summer and that kind of stuff and so just to know where to park. And then I would like to know what can be done, um, about the creek in the backyard to fix all of that, so.
Is that this?
Yes. And I took pictures of both sides, mine and my neighbor's yard, but y'all are welcome to come out and look at it anytime, we're home all the time.
Is the creek in the backyard on, uh...
Well, I mean, it's on our property, but then again, it's a, you know, city creek, so I don't know who's rightfully in charge of that.
I think it's us.
Yes.
There's a spot in that creek that, and the house behind you that I went and looked at one day and it gets incredibly, it's, it needs to be dug a little bit wide.
Yeah, and it was wider back in the day. I mean, we've lived there for, I, I don't know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years and, um, and it has since overgrown quite a bit, so. But we do keep it mowed, um, but that's the extent of it, but I would love to see it more manicured and it's a little bit safer for the kids to play bare-flowing. Yeah. Yeah. The culverts that I do know, the culverts be, uh, between our two yards have, like, you can see the whole thing, so that has gone away quite a bit through different floods that we've had, um, you can see the culverts in the entirety now. So, I just want it safer for my kids, really. We play outside a lot, so, that's it.
So do we, do we address this? I apologize, I'm new at this, so...
Same.
Do we address this or...
Okay.
We will, we'll get to work.
Can y'all post something so I don't have to watch an hour and a half's meeting? That would be so helpful. I really don't enjoy watching the entire meetings the entire time, so a quick post would be amazing. Y'all want to keep the pictures or, I mean, I've got them on my phone, so y'all can keep them in the file, whatever needs to protocol.
What was your address again?
315 Hole. Okay, here's the envelope for pictures.
Do you have any questions or, you know, just comments? I can't promise when schedule of, you know, paving will be, that, that kind of...
I mean, even like a, hey, paving's starting tomorrow would be great, updating on Facebook.
We usually do, we usually do post that if I know that it's coming, but as far as, right now, I don't know when they, but you're welcome to check in with me anytime and I'll, I'll update you.
I did call down a few months ago to check in and somebody was supposed to call me back and I never heard from them, so I just, it's almost been a year, so I'm just, would like that to be fixed, that'd be great, so, alright.
Thank you. I think there'll be an update tonight if you want to hang out, it should be coming up fairly soon on, on the progress.
Okay, I'll watch the meeting later then. We good?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, here's Nick. I'll go. Yes, sir.
Hello, Dr. Pete.
Hello there.
I'm Andrew Reed, I'm representing the Smith County Heritage Museum. I'm currently the president of the museum at this time. And I understand that there might be a proposal coming up to increase the lease agreement with the museum. And I just want to say that we, we've had a really good connection, as far as I understand, with the city of Carthage for, since 2004, over twenty, over twenty years. Uh, and we appreciate everything you do. We could call and ask for something to be done and it's taken care of without any question and it really helps us quite a bit. Uh, we're, we try our best to be a, a good part of the community, we, we participate with all events that we can and we, we're, we strive to bring in good tourism. We have a lot of tourists that come in, be driving down the interstate and they'll look for a place to go that might be interested in this area and they'll pull into the museum and they'll visit us and, and they tell us how much they appreciate what we have and how much they like it and a lot of times they'll leave us a good little piece of, piece of money in the tip jar, you know? But, uh, but I just want, like I said, we've been, the, the museum has been open for twenty-one years or more and we've had a good connection with the, with the town of Carthage. Anything that you guys could do to help us maintain that and help us maintain our ability to, to grow financially and to increase our whole being of being a good, good museum for the, the, not only the county, but the city and everybody else, we would appreciate it. Anything you can do to, to help us out with that. But we, we've gotten great help with you, like, like I say, anytime we've needed something, you guys have, you've responded and you've taken, helped take care of us in a really good way. But anything, uh, anything financially that you can do to help us further down the road, we really would appreciate it. Uh, last year, to help that out, or two years ago, couple, two or three years ago, we applied for a grant with the Tennessee State Museum. It was approved by the, uh, Tennessee State General Assembly and we, we won a grant to have our, one of our central heating, our central air handling units replaced at the cost of eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. And that was provided for by the Tennessee State General Assembly and the Tennessee State Museum. And hey, that was a good hit, that was really good for everybody. So we're, we're constantly doing what we can, but any, any future assistance that you can provide with us, we, we sure would appreciate it. And anytime anybody wants to talk to me about any matters with the museum, hey, all you gotta do is get in touch with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Barbara Conapple and I'm from Youth and Family Resource Network, The Spot, and the city has supported us, allowed us to use the building that we're in since 2011. Uh, but when Mayor Bowman gave us the key to that building, he said, "Go look at it and keep an open mind." And so there were no floors or ceilings in that building, no bathroom, no kitchen, so we have invested a lot of funds in there, just as our families in the community. Our mission is to empower families with the assets they need to thrive as positive contributing members of their schools, I could pass off that out, uh, of their schools and their community. So we've been doing this about twenty-five years, but we've been in that building since 2011 and the way that we serve and just in the last school year, so I wanted to give you guys this report because you have supported us for so long. So, uh, we've seen over a thousand kids this past school year with prevention education in the schools in fifth through twelfth grade. We have, um, also, that includes the after-school mentoring program where kids come after school, they get a meal, they get a life skills lesson, um, they get lots of activity and mentoring and we also, every Thursday, we have a class that supports youth that are in the juvenile system and we're seeing a reduction in those kids returning. Our goal is that they don't return as, uh, adult offenders. We have prevention events throughout the year to make sure the kids are off the streets doing positive activities, especially some of those kids that may not have the support that they need. We want to be that support. Uh, we have a good structure there, we have about five part-time mentors there, we have, we, board oversight, we have a strong board, um, that oversees everything that we do. And then we also offer recovery support because we not only want to support the kids, we want to put families back together and strengthen families, because that's the heart of, of our community and that's what strengthens our community. Serving on the county commission and the city council, I have a very good interest in seeing a strong community. And so I think supporting our family definitely brings that about. So we do recovery support sys, uh, meetings at The Spot and we also go into the jails and talk to the folks in there, hoping to get them back, um, in their families. Putting families together is our goal and we could not have done that since 2011 without this building and we have worked really hard to keep that building up and to improve that building. We just want to let you know what we're doing and say thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Could we, can I make a motion to move the, uh, new business, number two, contract changes for the Heritage Museum in The Spot up, since we have a couple here that are vested in this, uh, in the audience? Is this appropriate time to make a motion for that? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, do what?
Move it up to now?
Yes.
Well, can we make sure that, don't we want to finish the citizens, or anybody else wants to do? So I think we're, alright, yeah, uh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm making a motion to, uh, to move new business item number two, contract changes for the Heritage Museum in The Spot, uh, up to now, just below citizens' concerns and in between vice mayor's report.
I'll second.
Alright, motion's been made, saying it, uh, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Alright. Um, so who, um, who's, who's, who's this?
It's fine.
Let's talk about it, Gail.
Alright. They, I've had several concerns about tax dollars going to the insurance, that if you're in that building and it's your liability, that they should be paying the insurance and not this city or upkeep. I know that they made a contract for like ten dollars a year one time.
That's correct.
Is that still...
I think that's correct. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I was, um, you know, thinking that somehow we, we need to have the insurance between The Spot and the Heritage Museum.
And then there are insurance on that about twelve, twelve thousand a year?
It's about two to two thousand.
Two thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents.
Okay. For both?
That's for the buildings, I think.
So it would be like halved between the two.
I think you need to remember the basement, we use that as the town, so probably wouldn't be half, maybe thirds, or broke, broken up based on square footage, would be one approach to it, if you wanted to do that.
Well... I'm not.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Do we have insurance on the ball fields and stuff when we paint it?
Now that I couldn't tell you, anyway.
Is the ball field insured, we paint it?
We do, but they have to also include liability insurance.
And also we have to pay the insurance for, like, to the plate on the paint.
Probably just worth the policy. They use the bowling and the, um, T-ball best to...
I didn't know, we had to pay insurance for those, I mean, they're probably going to pay for those too.
It's a good question.
It is.
Yeah, really.
We did it for one, we had to for the other.
Boy, you got a lot of...
I think it could hurt the ball field it is down there.
I think both entities carry a, a coverage certificate liability that makes the town of Carthage payable for any liability or injuries that occur there. Insurance we're talking about is the...
Building.
Building itself.
Yeah, and I'm not sure the ball fields have any buildings as far as...
This comes under the general, general coverage for the town of Carthage, basically what happens there.
Um, any more discussion?
Well, Scott, can you tell me, are these buildings specially insured? Is there a separate endorsement for these buildings?
Yes, I have a premium breakdown on the, uh, buildings and personal property schedule. That's how I came up with the dollar amount, so I knew this was coming up, so...
So, is it just a fraction of what our total is for all city-owned property or is it...
Yeah, our total policy and building premiums are fifty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So how did we come up with the two thousand?
The insurance company gave me the breakdown of each building.
Okay.
Which I can pass it around.
Where are some of the examples of the other city-owned buildings?
Okay, 314 Spring Street, City Hall is two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents.
This building?
Yep. Eighty-four, or eight eighteen Upper Ferry Road, the raw, raw water intake pumping station is four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-five cents. Sewer plant, or actually the drinking water plant's fifteen thousand two dollars. Wastewater plant's seventeen thousand two oh five.
Scott, are there other city buildings with tenants in it? No, there's none too.
No, this is it. Only rental business we have.
Our two tenants have been making, building improvements on their own dime, so that's kind of my justification for a very low rent price of, uh, the air conditioning unit, neighbors with The Spot, so I, I can't remember everything, I'd have to have Barbara speak on it, but they have been making improvements, um, with their own money and grants and so forth. So that's why I've always kind of felt like, you know, I think it's okay that we're, we're helping a couple nonprofits with this.
So what, what would be a third of that if you thirded it?
Roughly eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Don't you think that would still be cheaper?
Right, yes, I'd take that.
I, I hear something to ponder, I guess, that I've, I've been thinking through this. How many nonprofits would you say we have in the town of Carthage? How do we pick who we house for ten dollars a year? What if another nonprofit comes in and says, "We need a place"? How do you choose?
Well, I think it's up to us on the lease agreements. So, we have lease agreements with these two specific entities.
Not now, we don't.
We don't, we don't.
So we need to make that happen based on this conversation.
Okay.
So, I guess we need, well, uh, was there any more discussion? Gail, do you make any type of motion?
I make a motion, a motion that they pay, I think you said eight-twenty?
Or a third of whatever that is. That's rough math, so...
It's a third of two thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Or, I suspect The Spot uses a lot less square footage than the museum. You could break it down based on the square footage of the whole bill, allocate the premium that way, if you were going to do it at all.
Should we table this to get a exact...
I don't think you need to, you do what you want, but we're operating without a contract.
Right. And we have been for quite some time, haven't we? We have been for quite some time.
Figure out the square foot of each one and divide it for that section?
Yep.
That'd be fair for everybody, I mean, that wouldn't be a real high rent, I think. Everybody would have been away a whole lot.
So, uh, is that how you would like to, where is your, or are you, are you still sticking with a third?
I think a third, because it's, you know, thirty, thirty...
Well, at first thought, my, my initial thought is who has more liability? Would it be the Heritage Museum or The Spot, but we're not even talking about liability insurance, you know? So, maybe it is fair to do personally.
Not my open, I mean, uh...
I think that's a good idea.
Square footage will take time, I mean. And I think time with the people that have caused me about it.
So...
Do you want to re-send this?
Yeah. Alright, so I guess we need a new motion on, we need to figure per squared footage and, and based on that, let's say they have half and then we have quarter.
Yeah.
And then I guess in that motion, we also need to, to say that we need a new contract.
Right.
So I, I mean, somebody needs to make that.
I make a motion that we...
What, excuse me?
I think Roger can speak to another issue that is related to this building and that being the painting. This would be the appropriate time to speak to that, what you guys want to do with that.
Okay.
It's been brought up by some painting and upkeep and, and I got quotes on that. And that would be eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
Is that in our packet anywhere?
No.
It's not, and the reason being is because technically it's under the ten thousand dollar threshold anyways.
Okay, so it was eight thousand seven hundred?
Eighty-nine ten.
Oh, eighty-nine ten, I'm sorry.
Would that be done in-house?
No.
No, that's through, that's with who, Roger? What's the low bid there, who is the low?
Uh, that would be with Patriot Contract here in Carthage.
I mean, upkeep, it, I mean, they're not paying that much, I mean, they, between them, I don't, I don't think it's their place to pay, pay it.
The paint is free, right? That, that donated?
No, this, this, this is a price for us paying for the paint, this is a price for us, them supplying everything and they said that they would work with us if y'all had donated.
We did, we both had the paint.
Right, so that price would vary some.
We know paint costs. We, we really tried to do our part here.
Cumberland Supplies providing the paint, or they're providing, uh, so many gallons.
Right.
According to one of the estimates...
Patriot said they would work with us on the price with what was dealt.
Yes, according to one of the estimates that Patriot actually gave, where Cumberland Supplies is providing paint for that estimate.
Can I remain painted? I know they're not painters. I mean, I'm just asking. I don't know why we, I mean, we, we would, the tax dollars would be out of paying eighty-nine-ten, and then plus their salary to pull them off of their regular jobs to paint it.
We don't have time to.
There you go.
I don't think so.
I, I didn't think you did, but I mean.
We're pretty tapped out.
Okay. It is the summer, I guess.
Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there'll be, from what I understand, there's quite a bit of prep work, not a tremendous amount, but there will be some prep work before they can paint it. Some, some concrete places have chipped off, the block has chipped off, and there will be, there's going to be some prep work before it can be painted.
Okay. Yes, sir.
The way I look at it, it's, we own the building, it's deteriorating, anything, any building is going to deteriorate, so you need to do routine maintenance on it, or else you're going to lose it. If we're going to ignore it, we ought to just give it away or something.
How about sell it? What about that idea?
Be all of that.
Instead of give it?
Yeah.
But now we're in the renting business.
I mean, at the end of the day, is that, should we be in this business, the city?
Lots of policy concerns, not legal concerns. But, I mean, if you look at it, I mean, do you, are, are governments in the business of making money, or are governments in the business of providing services to the town? So, I mean, is it okay that you're doing what you're doing? Yeah, absolutely. Is it what you want to continue doing? No, I don't know. But that's up to you.
I think it'd be good to keep the museum and the spot there, instead of settling for what is right.
It seems to be attracting people when you start moving things. So are we probably looking at two different amendments? One about the rental situation, or the insurance situation, and one about the painting?
Yeah.
I'm sure it is, yeah, I mean, that, that, that probably needs to be two motions, what do you think?
Yes. One is the city going to pay to paint its building? Two, what's the rent going to be, this coming here on these leases? So take them in the order of, or not at all?
So I need a, I need a motion and a second.
Motion and second, I don't know.
Well, I don't know, it can be, are we going to pay for the painting? That, that can be, you know, I can give a motion and second on that.
I make a motion for us to accept the bid for eight thousand nine hundred dollars, perhaps it'll be less because the painting's donated, so I make a motion for the city to paint and fix the building that way.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and any discussion?
So we know that all the paint's going to be donated?
Some of the paint, I think.
Some of it.
Maybe most of the paint, I think.
And then we're going to pay the, the eight thousand is basically labor for Patriot?
No, I think there's some paint in that, so.
Yes, there's.
So that will be low.
When I put this out, I wanted to be fair for everybody, so I told them what was going on, let them know, you know, just give me a quote for use of line of paint, and ask them if they would work with us if they had paint donated, and they all, all three of the people said yes, they would. So that price will change, depending on how much paint they have donated.
Okay.
Okay, so again, the motion is that we accept the bid, Roger's going to give us, I guess, a clear, no more than eighty-nine-ten, right? And then Sam's saying, uh, does anything else? All right, Daniel.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, I'm loose.
Councilman Leffich?
Yes.
Councilman Hattie?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, what about this contract and, um, and it, and the rent?
I'm willing to table it till we can find out the square footage, if that's the right we want to go till next month, or are we, should we do it tonight?
Well, I think, Gail, you can say, we'll, we'll figure this, I mean, the square footage will be, like Scott says, we're not under contract right now, and probably our insurance company likes to have contracts. So I think, you know, it'd be pretty cutting, rather than if you take the square footage, and then, you know, we can, we've got Scott to do the math.
Do it on a pro-rata basis.
Yeah, I mean, you can make that motion in that way, I think.
Okay, I make the motion that we charge the spot and the Heritage Museum for square footage for the insurance of the building.
Do we get a second?
Yes.
Any discussion?
And the rental, rental is still at ten dollars a month?
That's what we announced.
Or is it a year, ten dollars a year? This will be the, like, in place of that one, of the ten dollars a year. Oh, I thought it was for insurance. Well. So that's in with the insurance?
Pay their own, pay their own insurance.
So we're asked where, that your motion is for eight hundred and twenty dollars?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Based on square footage, because the spot uses, so we're going to let, she made the motion that, based on what Scott figures on the square footage, that they pay their first, so let's say we pay, because we're using the basement.
Right.
So we still pay some, Heritage Museum's going to pay a little more than, than.
The spot.
The spot, and the spot pays less because she uses less. But we're going to let, we're, I think, Gail, don't let me put words in your mouth.
Yes.
Is going to trust Scott that we'll figure those numbers.
Absolutely.
And, and then that's going to be what we will charge them.
As the new contract.
It'll be proportional to the square footage of the lease thing.
Right, instead of the ten dollars a year.
So we got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All right, roll call, Daniel.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilman Leffich?
No.
Councilman Hattie?
Yes.
Passes. Uh... So moving on, um... I've got a few things on the mayor's report, um, the old bridge is going to be closed, and you get those dates, Daniel, and you might want to take note, June.
Nine through. I know it's the month.
We ended up with two.
Yeah, there's two dates. The first closing is to, to, to clear the vegetation underneath, and the closing is going to be Chris Dennis said, ninth through the thirteenth, from eight to four. You probably see it wouldn't take that long, and then the, uh, June sixteenth through the twentieth. Uh, so the ninth through the thirteenth, they're going to clear the vegetation, he didn't think that they would, it would be the entire eight to four, but it could be, so it's going to be, they're going to open it back up at four, close it back down. Those dates. The next one is, uh, and I, from what I understand, Chris is bringing in like some super-duper inspection team that's going to be hanging from roads and Spider-Maning down and around and all kinds of stuff, checking this bridge really good, and pray that.
Yes.
It stays open, because that bridge, in my opinion, is the lifeline to our downtown.
It is.
I keep thinking about this all the time, and I want to bring it up. I don't know what we can do to protect our old bridge, the old bridge, from big trucks and other stuff, but, um, uh, I think it, I think we need to put our thinking hats on and do it, because if everybody starts going, we got a beautiful, I think our, our main street is, is really improved over the last ten years. And lots going on, I mean, people walking down the street, I love going down, you know, they eat and they go shop, it's, it's great. But if that bridge closes, and everybody's got around the bypass, there's going to come back around.
The ones that live here.
Not at me, nope. So anyway, that's, that's the bridge closure stuff, and, and I hope everything goes well with that. Uh, so we talked a little about the Corps of Engineers, um, Grant, so eighty-five, twenty-five, it's about five million, and, um, so Derek was, was, had the task of submitting a, a very detailed sketch, schematic of all the water lines in this town, so Derek, can you, have you got that in, uh, quick or slow, go?
Yes.
So I just want Derek to give us a little update, and then I'm going to let Scott talk on that just a second.
All right, they wanted a detailed list, basically to prioritize worst lines to, to the best, uh, which we all know, we have twenty-seven miles of bad water lines, so it's kind of hard to prioritize. Uh, we got that done, got that submitted to them, uh, we got the digital mapping submitted to them, uh, like they asked, and, uh, it's basically in, in their hands now, they're reviewing all the information, and, uh, we'll see what their next steps are, but, uh, I think I had about, of course, we know five million dollars don't go a long way, um, but to the best of my knowledge, it covered about nine streets.
It was longer than no making though.
That's right. Five streets is a big, it's a big step.
Yeah, you know, just keep chugging, is what I say. Scott, have you had any correspondence of anybody on that?
No. No, it's seventy-five, twenty-five, just like the bank erosion, um, but just remember, we still haven't got the bank erosion done, and we've been working on that for a long time, two administrations through, but they spoke very favorable that the money was already there, uh, for this, and, uh, I asked the question when we met with them, do you think possibly you're going to be working on some of these water lines at the same time we're doing the bank erosion? And he said, yes, but that's all we have, ball's in their court, it may be a week, it may be three months, so that's just the way you work with that, so.
And then, um, so we had a concern about the roads, and, and the roads are a concern, and I think we've had some, some talk about that. Here's the issue, in my opinion, and y'all know more about this than I do, but, so we don't, obviously, we, hole's been tore up too long, but we still got sewer to go, right?
Correct.
And, and we think most of that sewer's going to be, um, non-invasive kind of, right? You just run a thing through the tube.
Correct, it'll be a liner that goes through the main, uh, but the issue is getting from the main to the house, that part will have to be dug up.
Yeah.
Which means they'll be digging the road up, uh, so we don't want to.
Pave.
Totally pave. Um, I think, of course, we know what Smotherman looks like, and, and I can't keep gravel in it from all the rain, uh, but I do think we need to discuss, and I'll let Roger speak to that, uh, we need to discuss some options on what to do, uh, because I, uh, I mean, Scott got word, we met with an engineer the other day, uh, and he gave me a timetable on, on when we think that the sewers may be done, uh, basically, uh, they wouldn't start the sewer until September, and wouldn't have a finish date until April of next year. So we, we are in agreement that we can't let the roads stay like they are for that period of time.
Okay, so we've talked about a few things, and Roger, you, uh, you hit on this in a minute, all right, but, and I think we have this in the budget, but, so maybe temporarily we might tar and chip?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Be a lot cheaper.
What's, what, what was, what do you think, what were, what were we talking about there, Roger?
Just patch it, yes, for right now.
Patch it or tar and chip, pretty much the answer?
Whole tar and chip. No.
Okay, just patch the holes?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it would be contracted, and I, it'll have to be put out for bid, of course, it'll be over ten thousand, but, uh, I got a, I got a quote, of course, that'd be sealed bids, I got a quote from one company, but I really don't want to discuss it in case they want to use that for their sealed bid, but I can pass it around, you can all look at it and see what it's going to look like.
You got a quote for which roads, just whole?
For hole and, and Smotherman. There's two of them.
But we can pave from Dogwood to College, we can pave back, and we can pave from Davis up to the mansion house. We're just getting paid before Davis and Dogwood.
You're starting next.
I think he's got. I am starting Monday on Carmack.
Wrap that down real quick.
Okay, I've already asked last this question, but I'm not, I knew that, at, on two oh two Carmack, they had, what's the word, I'm lack of terminology here, ask for the city to let something drain in their backyard at two oh two Carmack? Well, when we start to replace any of those lines, will that upset that?
I'm not sure what they're letting drain in their backyard.
Which drain, you're talking about the big drain?
I'm talking about the one that goes through the backyard.
Yeah, the big drain.
That, will that bother?
Our water line will be off the street.
Right.
And, and will be forty-five inches deep.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll never get as deep as whatever.
Okay. Okay, okay, is that, that's, I've just had.
I think this is a bid for hole, I believe.
It's just a quote, we've not bid it out.
No.
We're just going to see what, what it would essentially cost.
One of them's for hole and one of them's for Smotherman.
Yeah.
I see the, is that the Smotherman?
They both go together, yes.
Okay, y'all want to see the hole, yeah.
I just thought they could go sit the pavement and hole streets and we're about to back in there digging.
Right.
I think so.
But we don't want to leave it like it is.
No, something's got to be done, if it is bad.
Smotherman's awful, but it's what it is.
That's the same.
Well, it'd make hole, I mean, it'd make hole worse than heels so steep.
Yeah.
And it just.
And that's just patching?
Yeah.
Is that the only quote we got?
Yeah, we're just going to get an idea about what it would cost.
Yeah, so that's one quote.
Yes, that's going to roll down a whole nine yards, we're just going to have to pay for this.
So if you decide to do this, you better approve us to go through the bid process for those two streets.
So do y'all think we need to do that tonight?
Maybe to start the bidding process, and then next time we can.
Just a, yeah, just a motion to approve a bid, or a, you know.
To look at the bids.
Since I was said this.
I make a motion to flip the bid out for the patching of Carmack, no, Smotherman and Hole.
And I'll second.
Gail and Sam, any second, discussion on that? All right, let's roll call.
Yes.
Oh, we don't need a roll call? Oh, that's just a big question. All in favor?
All right, aye.
Any opposed? Passes. All right, so Department, let's just start, Rusty, you got anything, Rusty?
Uh, no, nothing new, but if you all have any kind of questions, what do you think? I'll be happy to answer. Thanks, sir.
Colonel, the status of the pump?
Uh, as you know, a few months ago, we bid out two intake pumps at the river. Um, as of today, I have no concrete answer of when it'll be installed, I, I am being assured that it will be done by the end of this month, but, uh, we'll have to see.
Rusty, I have a question, this may not be addressed to you, a citizen emailed me that lives on Virginia Avenue and, uh, was saying that, uh, she wanted me to bring this up tonight, that her house, she drew her bathwater, and the, the water was murky, and, uh, said she couldn't see the bottom of the bathtub, and water bills are already high, so kind of wondering what's going on with that, is that?
I can address that.
Okay.
We had, uh, an employee up in that area flushing the lines.
Okay.
And when you flush, it stirs up sediment in the lines, it's usually an hour or two, it'll settle back down. Uh, but we, that is actually a dead-end line there, so we, we flush that right there to, to get clean freshwater up there, and that's probably what happened.
Anytime there's a repair or heavy flushing going on, it's going to stir some of that sediment and stuff up, so the dead-end lines get it worse, so I can't say that's what caused it, but.
Because something we can't help, so they should, if that happens in my house, should I just try to run?
Let it run for a little bit. Let it run for a little bit?
Put it run for a bit, can clear up?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, then again, we've addressed this a little bit, but with this, uh it's kinda like Rusty says, when it leaves his shop, it's clean.
Right.
When it goes through five miles of of the hundred-year-old line. So that's an issue too, but I mean, that's that's what, that's why I feel this water line is extremely important to to this little town.
Yeah.
Alright, who, I mean, I know we've heard from you, Roger.
I'm talking for the sewer department.
Okay.
So.
I didn't make excuses, David.
Yeah. Mister Mister Steve, he was out tonight.
Okay.
I I don't really have nothing to report besides uh the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, they're coming down this coming Monday to take some soil samples, but other than that, everything's been swayed here.
Are those samples for like what what we're talking about, the erosion?
That he is, yeah.
Okay. Great, maybe they're getting their ball aroma in them. Roger, you got anything else?
The only other thing I have is we had our state inspection of the pool this week and passed the line code. And it's great.
Derek, you got anything else?
Uh the only other thing that uh I wanna give you an update on was uh we got on the fire suppression meters uh that y'all approved a while back for all the businesses that that have sprinkler, fire sprinklers, uh that water wasn't metered. Uh I think we have six installed and I still have eight that hasn't paid yet. And it's, that deadline was back in March, into March. We have turned it over to Attorney Griffin and I think he's he's coming up with a solution to that. Uh just wanted you to be aware, um it's not not really fair for some to pay and and some some not to. I think it all being forced all the way across the board. Uh but we are working on that. Other than that, uh you know about Smotherman and and the sewer update. And I wanted to say we are gonna start on Carmack Avenue Monday. And we'll do our best with signage and maybe get some digital signs up to help uh with the uh maybe the stopbar and traffic. Getting them diverted down Jefferson Avenue.
Okay.
If you know anybody that lives on Carmack, pass the word along to them.
Sure, wait. Thank you.
Alright, so um unfinished business, we got Sally. Oh!
Joe.
I forgot Joe.
Sorry, Joe.
Sorry, Joe.
No, it's alright.
And I forgot bringing that one.
I didn't get my reports here in time, so I owe y'all an apology for that, would you pass a couple of those down? Sam, would you pass some of those down? I have no excuse other than I've seen about ninety kindergarten to third graders today outside for hours, so I was a little late getting this here. Everything is good as far as I know. We've seen about a hundred and seventy kids this week.
Great.
Good.
Guys, I don't really have anything for y'all, I was gonna touch on Thursday night, traffic delay, but I already touched on that. If y'all have any questions for me, be glad to answer them if you have and everything's going good as far as I know.
Good.
Thank you.
Alright, so budget, so Dave. Oh, Scott.
Come on up, Scott. I can put it in the front of the budget discussion if you.
Okay, that's fine, I do, okay.
So I wanted to expand upon what Derek had said and um just to remember, our original plan was to try to do the water lines, the sewer lines, and then come back with all new paving. Uh the best laid plans go skew and so you you uh you adjust from there. So water lines are progressing, we're still waiting on um SRF to uh do their thing, an engineer. It's been approved, so that's gonna come soon, so. So we're gonna do temporary paving, patching, I guess, cause we all recognize it's not good where it is. Little extra expense, but we have the funds to do that, so sounds good. Alright, and then, you know, I had prompted Rusty to talk about the pump, why that was, what more important to me is that we have this pump uh budgeted for this year, okay? So that's why we wanna get it done by six thirty, but if it doesn't, just so you know, uh we have a pump scheduled for next year as well. We'll just adjust the budget uh if we don't get it done by six thirty, so. That's what our, that's why that's important, cause the timing of it makes a difference. Okay, if you have your finance report there uh in front of you, I did want to, cause we are talking budget and this is important. Wanted to just reemphasize on the the financial summations, if you will. In cash, you have in general fund, five million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five eighty-three, okay? Just remember, that's for uh general fund items, that's Police Department, Fire Department, all those departments, Public Works, Finance Administration. It's not for the water sewer fund, okay? Street aid, at this point, we have two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and nine. Uh we'll get another eight, nine thousand for June, so we'll have roughly three hundred thousand dollars in street aid to help pay for this temporary paving. And um we're gonna have, be well in good shape to pay uh whenever we get water lines and sewer lines done. At this point in time, if you got a better crystal ball, tell me where you get it and I'll buy one too. Uh water sewer fund, we have two million, five hundred and five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars at this point in time. We have submitted on our grant uh for the part of the COVID grant, it's called the State Water Infrastructure Grant. We submitted a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars plus, uh and they're taking their time, doing their thing, okay? So um that's all we can do, we're gonna submit another one uh probably next week. But eventually, that money will start start coming in, a portion of it. Uh debt, you can see, is one point five million dollars, almost one point six, that's in the water sewer fund. Uh and water sewer fund is, I'll show you something, talk about that in the budget a little bit more. Very solvent in general fund, very solvent in water sewer fund right at the moment. Uh and we're in a good, a good debt position, uh but that's gonna change once this SRF starts for two point seven million dollars. I did want to ask you to look to page eleven, it impacts these budget decisions now. In the general fund, we have cash receipts over expenses through May of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. I expect us to end between that figure and three hundred uh at the end of the year, okay? So that's a surplus in the general fund. Alright, uh let's talk budgeting. Uh so we've had two workshops and we had the first reading. You have the budget or they have the ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance there in your stack of papers, so I'll let everybody get to that. And then um what I'd like to do is kinda step down through uh major points at this time. You can discuss every dollar if you want to, uh just know we're supposed to have this done by and submitted by June thirtieth. If we don't, we have to operate under this year's budget and that will be problematic. So I would encourage you to try to get resolved tonight or this month, okay? Had one request uh at the last meeting to put back into the budget the Police and Administration building uh for three and a half million dollars, and that has been done, that's highlighted there under expenditures, you can see uh that's been added, where it's yellow. Okay, so we're talking general fund now. And the police department, uh one thing on my report, if you look back at your finance report, um the last page is in your finance report. Pages nineteen and twenty. So you'll see in just a moment, Police Department and Drinking Water uh plant, Rusty's plant, those are, have to be manned. They're essential personnel, so uh we under budgeted for both of them. Our methodology has worked for three years, this year it didn't. I always build a little extra into that, but this year we had some additional expenditures and so using section six of the prior year budget ordinance, I, with the Vice Mayor's approval, we moved monies around. No new appropriations, we just moved monies around in accordance with what our budget ordinance allows us to do. But I did want to alert you to that, and then we adjusted the twenty-five, twenty-six, okay? So you'll find the Police Department, uh wages have uh have gone up. I'll give you an example, they get seventy-two hundred dollars or sixty-eight hundred dollars, uh depend on the year, uh from the state to pay their officers. And this year, they got it twice. Good, so that 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 hits our budget numbers. And then we had some additional holiday bonus pay that uh we paid out per the personnel policy.
So so Scott, that looks like a an expenditure, but then it comes back when the state cuts us a check as.
That's right.
But so it it looks like we're spending, but we're really getting back.
We did for that, okay? But we did have some additional expense in the Police Department and Drinking Water for essential personnel to work always, okay? So we've adjusted twenty-five, twenty-six budget to reflect what we incurred this last month, uh to make sure we had enough money on the budget. Okay, uh I always try to put a little more because you have a lot of variables that come in. Just didn't put enough in, okay? And if you got any questions about those two, not pages nineteen and twenty, you can ask, I try to give you as much explanation as possible. Okay, so general fund, that's why the Police Department's highlighted, it's for their um the biggest changes in salary and benefits for the Police Department. So uh I did not make a determination whether we're borrowing or how we're gonna finance if we're gonna do the Police and Administration project, uh so I just said I take it out appropriations. We'll have plenty of time to adjust and approve financing or whatever if you if you get to that place, okay? So. Are there questions about the general fund that you wanted to bring up? Let me get through all of them, then if we could, if then you can come in with your, hey, what we wanna do. Say, so go to the next one, Cindy. State Street Aid Fund, um nothing has changed through the whole process of estimations. Uh we're still still roughly the same. Next one, please. Sanitation Fund, uh nothing has changed on that. We're in good shape with that, keep up with that, done some additional work to improve that whole process. But it's not really material to the whole budget itself. Okay, next Drug Proceeds Fund, uh nothing's changed on that, um it's pretty well the same. What we've discussed for the, since March. Okay, next one, Water Sewer Fund. In Rusty's department, uh we we had the same wage issue for essential personnel, so we've adjusted that. That's why it's highlighted, but everything else um is pretty well the same. We may have adjusted a thousand dollars here or something based on uh what we thought the electric bills are gonna be or something like that. I will say, we've had to make more adjustments for reaching expenses this year because in every department, the costs are up. But uh overall, we're in in good shape, but. So next slide, please. Okay, I did want to just highlight this, so you you passed it, at least since I've been here, uh we just increased the dollar amount last year. But money may be transferred from one appropriation to another in the same fund, okay? An amount up to twenty-five thousand by the mayor, subject to such limitations as long as we report it to the governing body. And we've always done that, and that's what pages nineteen and twenty are in, the finance report, to let you know how we did that. I just wanted to highlight it so you cognizant of it. Okay, next slide. So now we take questions and discussion, you have to be very clear if there's, I have to have clear direction, how do you want things changed, the consensus? So that'll be up to the Vice Mayor to figure that part out, um but not yet, let's not do it yet. Once we have the questions and discussions, my recommendation is hopefully we can come to consensus and have the second reading fixed with the understanding that whatever changes you've got, we'll make and we'll submit to the comptroller. And that'll probably be middle of next week, cause they have a new process now for us to submit that, which we just got to date, so. We'll, I'll get it in next week, we'll get it in next week. So now it's up to you folks to discuss any and all things you want and if you need me to give information to help you make a decision, I'll be glad to do so.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want me to.
We're open for discussion.
Do we need to get a motion or something?
First, suspend.
Do a motion.
So I guess we need a motion to. Okay, like.
Motion to suspend Robert Fish.
First, got a motion and got a second.
Second.
Second, second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I I'm just, I know that we do raises on merit base, but we've not done a COLA raise. And I would like to see how we feel about a one point five over the board COLA for the employees. Insurance has gone up on them and.
So, and I'm sorry, you're having me in.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
And Scott, I'm gonna need some help with that.
Alright.
So from what I understand from um the budget is, we gave a merit and then we gave about a two and a half percent rate increase.
I'm not exactly right.
To so, but to those that that the department heads deemed were worthy of it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so so they not, they got it, if if they were good hands, they got a rate, I guess, uh.
They got a two, two and a half percent merit raise, okay?
Oh, they got a two and a half percent merit?
That's two and a half merit raise, okay? Just so happens that the Social Security Administration's cost of living increase happened to be the same amount, but they're not related, it's coincidental. The grade and step table that we use to pay the employees is incremented in two and a half percent increases per step, okay? Grades are at eleven, eleven percent. So, just so you know, these through two administrations, we've worked hard to try to get uh employee evaluations, okay? We finally got that into a a process that's working. And so the department heads make their evaluations, uh written evaluations, they're putting personnel records and they make a, it was a line on the personnel uh evaluation interview evaluation that says recommended for however many steps they wanna recommend them, okay? They're not limited to one, um but they, the department heads make those recommendations. I take that and I use the table that we have, that's been established two years ago now. Uh and whatever they've recommended, that's what I have put into the budget and that's the figures there. The cost of living increase, what would happen there is if you did a COLA increase, every step in our salary table would go up by unapproved cost of living, so that whole chart would change, okay? But they'd still get their merit increase, so.
But everybody would get the.
The cost of living, whether they got a merit or not.
Right, that's what.
Uh but the whole idea through two administrations is to get a pay structure that meant something, because it was all over the place, who got paid, it just based on the initiative of whoever took the time to say, hey, I wanna give my employees a raise. And if somebody did, as a department head, they probably got the raise, if they didn't, people didn't get a raise. Now we have a system in place that's based on objective data, and that's the personnel evaluation. It's taken four years, four and a half years to get us into that place.
And that was in our system, we had somebody.
We had somebody we paid to put that study together.
Right. And we made some adjustments to it to fit us. We still have some people who are well underpaid based on the study. But we did the best we could with what we had. Does that make sense? So.
Well, how does anybody feel about that? That's something that you'd want to do to keep employees here and not going somewhere else?
I personally think it deserves a COLA raise. And that's just.
So we haven't really done that.
We've given a two and a half percent raise if they are, their department head has has deemed them that they needed to get that. And then a COLA would go to everybody. So are you? I mean, I don't know what that number would mean exactly.
Well, if you used one point two five percent, it would put between the water sewer fund and the general fund, the total expense would be about sixty thousand dollars, a little less than sixty thousand dollars between the two funds to make on one point two five percent, okay? If you want me to calculate it exactly, I've got, I'm ready to do that. But one point five, we'd probably say sixty-five thousand between the two funds itself.
Okay. So can we? Can we hold off on? Does that answer your question? So can we bring that? Does anybody else have any other questions? Do we need to, can we come back to that, I guess is what I'm saying? Or does, do we need to make a?
You guys are suspended, Robert.
Oh yeah, we're suspended, so we wouldn't talk about that either. My balls went insane.
You want to bring this back up tonight or another night? What do you think?
No, I think the thing is, John, we got, this has got to be done by the thirtieth. So if we change it, we're going to have to do one of two things. We're going to either have to have a special call or we're going to have to say we let Scott, from what I understand, we let Scott make these changes, these amendments based on tonight's discussion. So I don't care to amend it. I mean, it's, you know, up to y'all, but we can, we can make this change tonight. I'm just, yeah, we gotta kind of, if we're going to do it, I think we gotta do it tonight.
We need to do it tonight.
I guess now the decision is one point five or one point two five.
One point two five or one point five if we make the change. And these monies would come out of, so the water and sewer employees, for example, would come out of water and sewer fund? Okay.
And everybody else would be general fund?
Okay. Could I, could I get an estimate on what one point two five would cost us out of the water and sewer fund? And what a one point five would cost us? Of course, I'm personally kind of concerned about the water and sewer fund because that's our thing, but I mean, I don't know if that's the money you feel like we have to be careful with because that's our water bill rates.
Yeah. And also, you know, they've said that we needed to, because we should allow Robert to.
Yes.
They have suggested that we go up over the next five years on water bills.
Right. More than, yeah, it sounds like.
But we won't make sure we got employees to.
Exactly, oh yes, absolutely. There's just no good way to get money for water and sewer fund and that's our most important thing. It's just our big problem.
If we do.
This was the resolution that was passed back in July in order to get a two point seven SRA.
Well, you gotta think about the people too. It's.
I agree.
You've already got the thirty-three percent water hike and then you're going to give the employees raises. What do you think the citizens are going to say about that? They may not say nothing, but you know.
Some are going to say.
On that one, it was like fifty cents on the per water bill. If we done a.
If you do a one percent.
One percent.
It will be less than fifty cents for each bill increase.
A one percent COLA rate?
No, increase in water bills if we do that.
On a water rate increase, not talking about?
Not talking about the raises.
Not talking about the raises.
I'm sorry, yes. And that way, if we done it little by little, fifty cents is a lot. I mean, I get that because it is for me. But that's something I guess we really need to think about.
Well, and also, no, we, we're kind of structuring our water going, I mean, water's going up more, right?
Well, it's going to have to for over the next five years.
Yeah.
We just have to bet the bullet to say we're going to go up for this year or next year.
But y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but with all this water, replacing these water lines, isn't that going to help? What we'll have to go up on?
It will help, okay? It's the same thing while we trying to get these old water fire suppression systems in place. One, it's been required by law for decades, okay? We just haven't forced it. Two, you know, we've had one customer that's lost two hundred and eighty thousand gallons in the last two weeks. And that's been happening for several, who knows how long? So that's about two thousand dollars cost that we're, or revenue that we're losing. So the intent is we're trying to raise revenue where it needs to be that's already been in place. The reality is, as I've always said, we need to be in plans to increase the water rates at least by the inflation rate. But if you're going to put in these sewer lines over the next five years, we've got to go from three to six percent increase. That's the only way they would let us borrow the money.
Is there a rate increase budgeted?
I do not have a rate increase budget. And if you decided to do that, I recommend, well, this is believe what we, I would say, you don't have to make that decision for sure tonight because we want to get this budget in in July and August. There'll be two months of discussion and then we would have the, it would be implemented like in September, okay? But you've got five years according to TTX criteria and by the resolution that we've already passed.
Okay, I think it's already been answered, but how long ago has it been since we've done a COLA cost of living increase?
Scott? It wasn't last year. It's twenty-four, twenty-three is when we did the whole salary benefits study, okay? And most of the employees were brought up to the recommendations. Some were not brought up to the recommendations, but we had to, since our employees were all over the place, we had to make some adjustments to that to be fair all the way across. So it was twenty-twenty-three that you could say, quote, brought up to what everybody should have been, okay?
But our salary structure, what you're saying is kind of got away from a COLA raise, right? It went more to a merit rate.
But even then, standpoint is for those employees that may not have gotten merit increase, that's why we implemented the longevity bonus. They've been here, they get a little extra pay to accommodate that. Some people may be operating at their maximum capacity, okay? And we wanted to make, be sure our fairness to them as well. They do the job, they're just not able to progress for multiple reasons. So a cost of living says, okay, we got wages good in twenty-twenty-three, but we know that not everybody got a merit increase. That's the department head's decision, mayor's approval. And then the cost of living says we will adjust that table up. So if grade one, step one is ten dollars an hour, if you increased it by cost of living, we would say ten dollars would be ten dollars and a quarter, I guess, okay, an hour. So the whole table adjusts. I know that's complex, but the reality of it is, is probably something that needs to be considered to do the COLA to that table every so often. Is this the year? I don't know. But John has brought up a good point. The water sewer fund is where that most concern would be. So in our case here, so since I was anticipating this conversation, I've done the work to say council recommended increase cost of living is one point zero two five, okay? So at one point zero, or one point zero two five, total increase with the COLA, the total increase with the merit raises is three thirty-four. Prior to the COLA increase is two seventy-four, nine fifty. So that's fifty-nine, eight twenty-six and that's two point five percent COLA. So if you want it to be, would you say, Gail, one point five?
That originally is, but.
Two-five raises it. Just basically doubling that. So it'd be a hundred and twenty thousand. Lines not looking. Just that. But I know mathematically.
So it costs us a hundred and twenty thousand?
To do a two point five, that would.
To do a one point five. To do a one point five COLA additional to the merit increases.
Two point five. I think he said two point five. Be a hundred and twenty thousand.
Well, now, didn't, didn't we say that they could have went up two steps? So that would be five and then you add a COLA up to, that could be seven and a half percent.
On some.
On a very few.
Very few.
But that's where the goal was, okay? It's up to the department head. They run their department. So I got the one point five in so you can see here, that's one nineteen, seven nineteen, okay? But remember, we're simply saying that approve the budget based on the department head's recommendations, merit increases. General fund salary and benefits would increase by seven point one, seven point one three percent, okay? And water sewer fund at sixteen point four six percent. The reason for that is you voted that the water and sewer line maintenance could hire an additional employee to help with line installation. I'm never going to tell you to do something that I think is going to put the town in a bad spot. At this point in time, if we can do this, because it's quite possible that this health insurance that I highlighted, I calculated at five percent. Last year it was one percent. So I'm hoping I've got that a little bit more. We don't find out that until sometime in June, okay? So I'm hoping that'll go a little less. I don't know if I'm thoroughly confused or not. So I think you decide, first of all, are we going to approve the original merit increase raises based on department head recommendations? And then you come and say, okay, we're going to make a COLA adjustment this year or next year, the next year, whenever you want to do it.
Well, I know, I just would like to, the ones, I'm just saying, the ones that just a COLA of the, for all over the board, I guess.
I agree.
Because, you know, we got to keep them. And they, there's too many lucrative jobs that they could take, that they could leave us and we've got a good crew that run this city, can run the city by itself.
Any more discussion on this?
I kind of would like to discuss it with citizens myself. I mean, that would be not voting on it tonight, but I kind of would like to get their say. Some people walk up to anybody and just ask them, are they willing, are they wanting us to give them a raise? Because people are really mad about thirty-three percent water hike.
I mean, there's. Remember it's been thirty-three percent.
We had to do that. I know, but they're, they're not happy.
There's no way we would ever get any SRF money if we hadn't done that. And we would've been two years already in arrears. Unfortunate, I understand that, but the reality is we got to get in the mindset and practice of it's going to cost more to deal for all of us, including the water. Our goal is trying to make sure we get every revenue source that we can and to fix water lines and sewer lines so we decrease the cost of the plants and that we got every business paying what they should be paying, okay? To be fair to all the citizens.
I'm sorry. So I think what, maybe what, correct me if I'm wrong, but what's this he's saying is it's went up thirty-three percent. We need, we had to do that, but do, do we need to put ourselves in a position with above the merit rating, a COLA raise that could possibly increase that more this quickly? Am I kind of on board there?
So we already have a new pay increase structure per se? And this would be another? So what I have trouble with, go ahead.
It would be like.
It would be over the board, but we're about to implement a different kind of pay structure. It's a.
We've already got the merit.
Yeah.
We already have that and that's kind of new. I guess what I struggle with is are we on par with what we should be paying or are we below or?
Yeah, we did a study. We, we weren't here, you, us three weren't, but what, three years ago, we did a study, right?
Twenty-twenty-three.
And since then, we've done, I guess, a merit type deal. So hopefully we are, gentlemen.
For, for the most part. We got it there, okay? Other municipalities, if you look at it, they wanted our lead. We said we wanted to lead and we took care of our employees. The cost of living increase is simply saying, hey, we recognize that inflationary cost, even if you got a merit increase, that's, you earned that, but that same amount doesn't go as far because to spend that money, inflation affects all of us, all of our costs. So whether you do a COLA every year, personally, my opinion would be no, I probably wouldn't. But it does need to happen periodically, if it's two to three years.
Yeah, because there's not been a COLA since twenty-twenty-three, right?
Hasn't been a COLA.
So we're two, going to be two.
We've changed our structure. We're.
We're going merit based. Yes, okay.
All right, so we're actually, we need to get back in. Can we, can we take more questions or we got to get back in? Any more questions on the budget? Anything? Again, we, so we had a workshop, we passed it once. Now's the time, we, I mean, like, we, we got to June thirtieth, so preferably what would be nice is to pass this baby tonight. And so make him finalize it and get it submitted by the third. So really the only changes over the last two times that we've looked at this is kind of what he pinpointed, okay? So let's get back in. If we want a motion of sorts, we'll, we'll do that at this time and we'll follow. So I'll make a. So, I'll make a, can somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to return to Robert Truitt's.
Sam, 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 make that.
And I'd like to make a motion that we do a COLA raise for all the employees of one point five percent.
All right, Gail's made that motion.
I amend it or however I have to.
Was your motion to pass the current budget?
Without amendment, yes.
Okay, and does she need to put into that that, that we can make that amendment and we don't have to? So, it's, that's why.
Yeah, pass the current budget subject to the amendment.
Okay. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, Gail made the motion, Sam segmented it. So, so what, what is it? What, I think the, the motion was made to pass the budget, amend it with a one and a half percent COLA rate increase for all employees. Should you call it a COLA rate? Should you call it something?
There's differing philosophies about it. Here, we understand it as a cost of living increase.
All right, so.
Is it, are we going to make, can we have discussion after that? Or I don't?
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, I want, I want to do that, but maybe next year's kind of what I'm thinking, because we have done a pay increase, I think the employees deserve it absolutely, but it just makes me really nervous to vote to do anything else to the Water Sewer Fund at the moment. And we do have the merit base already in place, so I just wanted.
You go ahead.
I just want to say that, just because I'm feeling doubtful about supporting the cost of living increase at this moment. So, it's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-three was the last time we did it. It's not quite been two years. Next year, I guess it would be kind of closer. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of, they deserve it, is what I just want everyone to know. I think the employees definitely deserve it, but I'm feeling a little cautious on it right now, just because of the our water sewer problems, and then we're going to have to raise water rates or find a way to get more revenue there. That's why I'm on the fence about it, if anybody can.
I'd like to give you some more information, okay? To help you with this. I understand. We're fixing to do a bank erosion project for two point four million dollars, which will go on our depreciation schedule to be depreciated. We're going to be doing water lines, which the total cost will be depreciated as expense. And we're going to do sewer lines, which the total cost will be there. So, if you look where that red pointer's at, look to the left, see estimated FY twenty-five depreciation's three hundred and nine thousand. Look to the left, twenty-four, what the actual was from the, it's three oh one oh seventy-five. That three sixty-five, by the end of June, okay? And we put these water lines that we're doing right now, when we put them on the books as a appreciable item, that's going to go up. So, all those construction projects, it's going to make that depreciation expense go up. And whether you do anything with the employees or not, we're going to have to do something in terms of the rates just to make sure that we don't fall into the regulatory authority of the utility board, okay? So, it's great that we get loans and grants, but you have to weigh in that it's an additional cost on our books from accounting perspective. So, we're, we, we're in good shape. Once we get that five, if we get the five million ins from there, we get Derek's projects that he's working on now, there's another four hundred thousand left. If we get the two point seven million dollars of sewer lines, that figure's going to go up substantially, okay? Where it says operating income, twenty-one, two oh seven, we're projecting. It's going to be tight. So, you're looking at, irrespective of the resolution, it's already been said, sent to TDEC to say, yeah, we'll do this if you'll give us two point seven million dollars, or if you will loan us two point seven million dollars and forgive twenty-five percent of it. We still know, in the next five years during construction, we're going to have to increase three to six percent in order to get that, okay?
So, we've got about three projects, I think, in the works that are substantial numbers. The erosion, best I can remember, about nine hundred thousand.
Erosion, our share of it, the total project's going to be two point four.
And then the core is going to be one and a quarter. Or was it one, two, something?
The core for the water lines, if it comes through, it'd be about one point two five.
And then we got the sewer. So, there's two and whatever the sewer was. I mean, we, we got, we got some stuff. And it's like, we don't know, that core could happen. The erosion deal, we had a little meeting, we discussed that last time. I mean, they could, well, they're coming. So, maybe they're starting. That could happen any minute, or it could be two years.
It'll be twenty or twenty-six.
So, anyway, keep in mind, we got some stuff out there that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fund.
We have a plan, whether you know it or not, we got a plan, okay? We can do this, we've got a plan, okay? But what I don't want you to do is say, okay, we're going to balance the budget on the backs of your employees, okay? I'm not here for that long, okay, anymore. But that's not the thought process you need to meet, you need to think about, okay? It costs money, and you can't get it all as, as been termed free money. None of it's free money. Taxpayers do this, okay? But we maximize our opportunities to get as much as we can. Seven to eight million dollars of capital asset projects in the Water Sewer Fund, that's all we can do, okay? But we do what we can do, and when we get to that point, who knows what develops, okay? But we're going, we're trying to do what's been done through the last two administrations, try to work on getting water lines, sewer lines. But we're also working on what can we do to make sure we get the water loss, so our costs go down. That's your sewer lines, water lines. But we're also working on these fire. I have two thousand dollars of cost, or revenue, not being collected. Six of those companies did what was required. The others haven't yet, are very working on it. But it's not fair to the citizens if we don't implement that privilege. And it is the law, not only the district code, but the international fire code. And that's more unfortunate than safety. So, what I'm saying is, John's observation is correct, okay? From my perspective, I would say reconsider cost of living every three years, okay? Or four years, whatever it is. Because there is the merit increase system in play for those that are not able to get a merit increase. For whatever reason, you've got to talk to the department heads about that. They have a longevity bonus that gives them a little extra money each year, and it goes up. So, that was the whole purpose of that. To recognize some people may be operating at their maximum abilities, okay? It's a tough decision. Tough decision.
How many employees do we have on the payroll?
Thirty-six. Not including part-time. That's both funds.
Do we know how many got the merit increase?
Most.
But not all.
Not, not everybody, yeah. It's not my call, it's.
Right.
It's the department head.
Is it, I mean, what's a year?
Merit increase? Not necessarily. That's up to the department head and the executive. But it's initiated by the department. But when it comes to me, I look at it and say, okay, well, it fits, and within our approved budget. That's the discussion that I have mine put.
So, would it fit water and sewer? Could we pay it and not have a problem meeting that one? And the sewer and?
So, I'm going to be the bad guy. My recommendation is stay with the two and a half percent this year, okay? Simply because of where the Water Sewer Fund is. But that decision is irrespective of whether I recommend the rate with the rate increase, okay? And solely because I know what projects we got coming and what the expense is going to be. So, I plan out five years with the best data that I can. So, I know most we're going to be able to do projects in Water Sewer is seven and a half to eight million dollars. We got the ball rolling now to get there, okay? Because depreciation in itself, no matter the source of that money, federal, state, whoever, that depreciation's going to hit the books as an expense. It's not easy thought process. Yes, I would love to say, yeah, do the COLA and the merit increases. Before the Water Sewer, I would say, no, but that's irrespective of the rate increase. If you don't do it, you need to do, you need to seriously think about the rate increase. Let's do that in July and August. If you go back to your original work papers I gave to you, the report shop, you go to the Water and Sewer, I've written in there, recommend rate increase. So, the department heads don't, our old employees don't give me a lick of it.
So, so with this new information, we still going to stick?
I would still.
All right, so Gail made a motion. Sam segmented it. Any other discussion?
Just real quick, top line, Scott, so one point five percent increase is going to cost a hundred and nineteen?
A hundred and nineteen, yep.
I don't think that number's right, Scott.
It is right.
Why, why would it go double from one point two-five to one point five? That's not a double number.
Three sixty-six thousand.
And that's not right either. It's fifty-nine thousand, double it. If you go from one point two-five to one point five, that's two point five percent. So, you just double the first figure you got. It's a hundred and twenty thousand, a little less than that. And it don't work out exactly because you got variables with TCRS, so.
Why are you doubling the one point two-five?
If you go to one point five.
Well, doubling one point two-five would be two point five.
The one just gets whatever you start with, okay?
Oh, okay.
It's the point.
Okay.
Zero two-five, plus point zero two-five is one point five, and you just double it.
Okay, so we're a hundred percent sure of above the hundred and nineteen thousand? Okay.
Mathematically.
What, theoretically, what would a one percent rate increase this year if we did an add to operating revenue?
We got, how many counts, what's one percent? It won't pay for that, for that much it could be. If you did one percent on the water, that's one per, one percent of the.
One percent on water rate increase?
Yeah.
Would be about fifty cents per bill.
Fifty cents per bill, times twelve, times how many customers we got?
Eleven hundred roughly.
Okay. And then it'd catch five thousand or less of the total. A one percent increase, it's not going to pay.
How many, so you said thirty-six employees, that, that just means Water and Sewer, is that the whole set?
There's eleven in Water Sewer. So, you can't decide to do it for the Water Sewer or General Fund.
Yeah.
And not do it for Water Sewer. So, you got to figure out.
What if we backed it off a one percent? With that? Ease the situation. We get something.
No, I agree.
It'd be about twenty-eight thousand increase. Take the water bill, have to go up any more to do it. I know they need the money, but. But you're not doing this for the salaries. The rate increase is to.
You're going to have to do it anyway.
You're going to do it anyway, if you want to borrow the money.
Three to six percent, have to.
Which we've always done. If you go all the way back to the third administration, we turned down money from, from SRF loan because the rate increase had to be eleven point seven four percent, and we decided we wouldn't do that. So, we didn't borrow the money to do the project. Just so happens in the prior administration, the dollar amounts that we borrowed weren't the big numbers that we're dealing with now, or back then. In my mind, you've got to get in the mindset of inflation happens right now to all of us, wherever you go, for whatever you're spending. And Rusty's chemicals go up every month, it seems like, okay? That ain't because of him, that's because inflationary cost, okay?
And I do understand that we, we've got to have some rate increases, but we as a, as a council need to be physically responsible and do what we can to keep those as low as, as possible for the twenty-two hundred people. So, we, we may have to have, you know, instead of a three to five percent, if we could do a two to four percent. And us being more physically responsible. Maybe that's the right, I mean, that's, I'm just talking it out here now, but.
Well, if you want to qualify for that SRF, you've got to do at least three over the next five years.
But, but if, you know, maybe we don't have to do four.
We will.
Maybe we don't have to do five.
I don't know what the final figure will be. When we start, when we finish these big projects, they're going to go on the books, and that depreciation expense is going to go way up.
So, he's saying now, we're going to have to have probably four. I mean, do we need to add to that?
No. We don't have to do it this year, four percent. You can just get in the habit of doing a small percentage as you go every year.
But our normal cost of living wage increase is every, like, three to four years, and we're only going on, like, two, so.
We stepped back a little bit before they, I mean, if they got some rate, you said they're likely.
And then there's that merit base and longevity bonus too, so. So, let's, anything else, anybody?
Can we ask one question?
I don't, I don't.
You don't have to.
I don't think so.
It's about something Scott said.
You don't have to.
So, let's go back to, to the, your one and a half percent rate increase, or wages increase. And amend the budget, but we're going to pass the budget based on it, okay? And then, so we got, all right, roll call.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
No.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman LeFitch?
No.
Councilman Penny?
Yes.
That's one and a half percent.
I'll make sure I understand. Merit stays in place, as I've already budgeted, and then I'm going to adjust for COLA at that table. For the one point, how much was it? Five percent?
One point five. All right. So, that takes care of the. All right, so that takes care of the question. Let's move on here.
We're not really voted on the second reading, have we?
Yeah, that's what we did.
Oh, I see how you worded it, I, I did it now.
All right, so, um, I assume I need to ask if anybody's here to represent this First Avenue West property, talk about it. Nobody's here?
I don't see him, vice mayor.
So.
I don't see a family either.
Again, to, to remind everybody, that's a piece of property that is rough, uh, some kind of bad stuff goes on down there. Uh, we've asked multiple, multiple times to clean it up. We get no, nothing going on, no, but no response, so.
Does it have running water or sewer?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Does it have a roof that keeps raining out? Does it have, does it have doors and windows?
Not really.
Everything's kinda falling in, half the floor's in there, half the floor's not.
It doesn't have four walls.
Is it fit for human?
Absolutely not.
No, our building is.
No, it's, it's already condemned, and it's, it needs to be, it's, it's a hazard.
Is it, is it dangerous to the public?
Yes, it's dangerous for first responders and stuff, law enforcement, we have to win every kind of time. I don't want anybody falling through the floor, getting hurt, and stuff like that.
Then I would take a vote and make a finding that this is a dangerous structure unfit for human habitation, and order that it be demolished. I would take that vote already.
Uh, so do we have to have a?
I would just take that vote, make that finding, and we'll do a ripcord.
So do we need to roll call that?
Yeah.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, they're good.
To motion it.
Oh, okay, so we need to, do need a motion. I make a motion to demo the structure on the, on the property.
Because it's unsafe for human habitation to change your structure.
Because it's unsafe for. All right, so John's made that, same, same for Gail. All right, all in favor, say a. Any opposed? Motion passes. So can we do it? No more time, wait, no more letters?
I think there's some, I'm gonna have to check the code, I think there's some time for that person to appeal. Um, I will let you know.
Thank you.
Can you sign everything?
Yeah.
All right, new business, um, the first reading of planning ordinance rezoning from R two to C two on one twelve Carmack Avenue. I don't know what, truthfully, I don't know what this is.
Well, I was, yeah, I was on, on your planning commission representative. Um, a couple of developers want to take down the house on Carmack. The address of one twelve, it's real close to Main Street, it's kinda bendal updated, it's kinda getting in bad shape. So they're, they're wanting to, uh, to demo this and put some duplexes there. But in order to do that, they need approval to rezone this from residential to commercial. So the planning commission gave a recommendation to, to do this, to, to rezone this for the purpose. Some neighbors of the property were present at the meeting. Um, one neighbor was just kinda concerned, or just asking questions, like what, what exactly are you wanting to accomplish by doing this? So they were appeased and not opposed. Uh, another set of neighbors that are really close to them, uh, had some concerns, and they're concerned, and, uh, they're not exactly opposed to this idea, but they are worried, uh, it could have asbestos in the house, is what they, they're just kinda worried about this, if they, if they take the house down, could asbestos drift over to their property?
John, it looks like to me that the, uh, developer, it's his responsibility to work with EPA to get that out of there.
It's true, this, some of this is kind of irrelevant, but it's kinda is, kinda isn't. So there's, they can tear this house down now, they don't need our approval to demo a house. They're just asking our approval to rezone it. So I've, I've kinda found it a little relative to at least bring it, bring it up, but, um, I, I, we talked about it at length, and I spoke with the developers before this meeting and explained that the neighbors called me, you know, are still concerned, like, the developers are going to try to appease the neighbors and reassure them, they're going to do some due diligence, I've just found out. They're gonna go out of their way to help our citizens, 'cause like, you know, we're here to make our citizens, uh, you know, appease them, that's who we work for. However, there's nothing illegal going on. The only thing we're voting on is about rezoning, not demoing the house. So the only concern I know of is the demo of the house, and does it have asbestos and will it go over to their house and get in their air units and go inside? So that's really out of our hands, the way I understand it. Um, but, the, basically everyone, the neighbors that showed up concerned people, we're okay with this idea, um, as long as that's okay. Uh, they're not upset with the rezoning, no, no citizen I know of is upset with the rezoning of this property. I feel like it would, it's gonna probably look good. Um, they're gonna build some driveways, which that property doesn't have driveways, and you know, that'll take a little bit more off the street parking. So that's, that's really all I.
Honestly, they can do it anyway, residential will allow them to build a multifamily unit, it's just changed setbacks a little bit for them to, due to commercial. So they could have built it regardless.
Yeah, R two, what I understood was R two would, would satisfy a duplex. So I guess my question is, why don't they want it commercially?
They're, they're, they're building a bigger one, they're building four in total. And it changes the setbacks because it now converts to R three setbacks if you build residential and a commercial. That's why.
So it's not necessarily zone residential, residential's just R one, right?
Well, there's R one, R two, and R three. So it already meets a residential.
So how did y'all vote?
Yeah.
Was there any discussion about them asking for a variance on the setbacks rather than?
It's already been to BCA, and BCA passed it contingent upon the ordinance passing.
Okay, so they, so they didn't grant a variance, they just said?
They granted it upon this passing.
Well, they don't need a variance if it's, if it's a rezon, do they?
Yes, they'll, they'll, they'll still need a variance, just like, but the reason it needs the BCA variance is because the old survey does not match the current survey, and that's something that's out of that.
Yeah, I don't recall us voting on, you weren't there, but in case you recorded it, chair, I don't recall us voting on, on a variance, though. They said may. Okay, okay.
That goes to BCA.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
All right, so do we, uh, need a motion in a second? I mean, do we have to pass this?
I mean.
So for council?
Yeah. Are you, I mean, pass or decline?
We, we did, um, yeah, yeah, we, we did. The only concern doesn't really have to do with our vote tonight, but I wanted you to be aware of a concern of a citizen. It seems like they're, they're gonna, they're gonna take care of it, they're gonna do the right thing. So I, I'll make a motion to, uh, for us to pass the, uh, planning ordinance to rezone one twelve Carmack Avenue from R two to C two.
Second. All right, so, um, John is.
Can somebody point on the map to where that is?
It's real close to Main Street, right across from Powell Meadows Old Building, uh, conjoined Powell Meadows Old Building on Main.
This is Carmack.
It's a old building.
This is Carmack Avenue.
Same as that old house.
Yeah. Really heavy Carmack.
And C two is the light purple.
Yeah, it backs up, it was.
It backs up to it?
It backs up to C two, that's what we're able to do and not be spotted, yeah.
Well, and, and not far, much further down there's a triplex, right? Or did it?
That's probably grandfathered down.
It's a, it's a four units, so we're like, we're, we're.
They're like building something there about while we still.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to do that.
But he went through all the proper channels.
So, so, would, would the proposed development, with the four unit duplex, complex, whatever that would be referred as, would that be consistent with other buildings around this area?
There, there are other duplexes and townhomes and apartments all through that.
In that same area of neighborhood, kind of so, they're getting any more.
It's gonna be premature to how there's, it's, there's.
Well, yeah, there's, so there's already a four unit, just maybe almost across the road.
Yes, that owner was that.
Is there a preference to doing a four unit over a two unit, which they could do without rezoning?
Revenue, yeah, probably.
Would it add to property values in that area?
Tearing down that old house.
I would say.
Yeah.
Well, specifically building a larger, um, development. Is that preferable to than just keeping it the way it is and building a smaller duplex?
Did they make more money?
No, from the city's perspective, you have to have rational basis.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know, I don't know why we let one across the road and, and not this guy.
No, I'm, that's a strange precedent there, not allowing it.
A, a citizen about something different, but the same topic, also reached out to me this past month and wanted me to ask the city workers about adding extra taps. Well, is this, can we handle that, can our infrastructure handle, could, not just this, but can we keep going?
On my water sewer?
Close.
So anything that gets.
You mean as far, you mean as far as our capacity?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we've got capacity, yeah.
We're going on capacity for water and sewer, if somebody asks me that.
So John, just so you know, since you're on planning, anytime a staff comes through like that with a new development, all the guys have to sign off on it, water, sewer, and everybody to say, yeah.
Okay.
So this adds four taps versus two, is all they can do now?
That increases revenue for the town, town fees, plus the extra service.
Right.
I need the water and sewer, though. All right, any, anything else? So John made the motion that we, um, changed it from R two to C two, Mr. Green saying it. So do we, all right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, passes. All right, so we talked about that, um, so the, the next council meeting is scheduled for like the third and the fourth, obviously, and there's big people out of town, so maybe we should propose to back that up a week, or we've talked about that, what y'all think, okay?
I'll make a motion that we move it to a ten.
To the ten. Good, good. All right, Sam made it.
Did you second? Yes, okay, sorry.
All right, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Um, can I get a motion, I reached for a reading. Can I get a, Gail makes a motion to adjourn, John seconded it.